Please have your own call, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Compton, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Mr. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Dr. Redline, at large.
Here.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you've been supplied with the agenda for today's meeting. Any changes, additions, or amendments to the agenda as written? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Tipton makes a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. It's all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right. Move to item five, the approval of the minutes. We've got quite an encyclopedia full of minutes for you to go over. You've been supplied with those. Our regular May 3 meeting of this board. We also had budget workshops on May 3, 2017, May 11, 2017, and May 17, 2017. You had a chance to go over those. Is there any of those that needs to be pulled out and handled independently? You want to upset? Oh, we had different, okay. All right, since we had different members attending, we'll handle those individually. All right, the May 3 meeting, regular meeting. Is there any changes to those minutes as written?
I make a motion to approve this.
All right, we have a motion to approve, May 3, regular meeting. Do have a second.
Second.
Mr. Heron, seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, May 3, 2017 budget workshop. Any changes to those? I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Compton makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hood, seconds. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, May 11, 2017 budget workshop. Any changes to those minutes or amendments?
I'll need to abstain from that, is what I mean.
All right, Mr. Hood would abstain from May 11. Do have a motion to approve.
So am I, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Heron makes a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. It's all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, May 17, our final budget workshop.
I'm going to abstain from that.
Mr. Compton would abstain from that meeting, from that vote? Are there any changes or amendments? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Tipton makes a motion to have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hood, second. It's all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, gentlemen. Thank you. Lot of work on paper. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we move to citizens' expression period, which is item number six on the agenda. This is a period in a meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so, if it's on an item that's not listed further down in the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from in the county, or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when we make future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If we have no one who has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action is to be taken by this board concerning something mentioned in citizens' expression period will be considered after we close citizens' expression period because we cannot take action during this period. So we'll do it right after. With those comments and guidelines in mind, we will now open citizens' expression period.
Good morning. I'm Ms. of Scott County Treasurer, and I'm here with a couple of figures and a couple of comments. Today, we have a total of $185,115.56 that's been applied for the DMV stops. I have some of my staff here today, and I want to comment on how well they've done. We're a little short-handed right now, and they've done amazing things with such little staff and such a short amount of time. This has been since February this year that we've collected this amount. I'm amazed. Another comment that I'd like to make is at the board meeting on Wednesday, May 3. I was sent the minutes of the meeting, and on a motion, sounds like it was made by Mr. Marshall Tipton, seconded by Danny Mann, the board established the committee compromised to Mr. Mann and Mr. Tipton to explore objection with the treasurer and the sheriff in the consultation with the county attorney, the possibility of implementing a county decal program report back to the board. Today, the sheriff and I have never been informed at that meeting, nor have we met with those individuals. Another comment, I've had some feedback from my county treasurers, my fellow treasurers on, I guess, these individuals who are calling, getting information based on their locality. I think to be united and work as a group, we need to come together and do so. And just under comment, just a quick comment concern. My trash line's been closed three of the last four Mondays. And I know we've had some comment and concern about that as well, so just a few numbers, facts, and figures.
All right, thank you very much. The, I will say that the solid waste center issue has been a problem, and it is listed further down the agenda. We are going to discuss that at length today.
Okay, that's correct. Any comments?
Mrs., we did look at that, and I don't know, we have a lot of negative comments about this. But going back to 2012, on the DMV stops, you started in February, doing everything we can to get these taxes collected, still a lot of stuff done. And so you yourself said you didn't in 2012, and you didn't.
You know, with respect, Mr. Mann, I'm tired of being a scapegoat for something that's not my fault.
It is your fault. When you're elected to do a job.
And I don't appreciate the fact that you as well are not willing to work with me, obviously. I've said it many times before, I'm still trying to figure out if it's personal, it's political. I don't know, maybe it's I'm a woman, I don't know. I don't have a problem, and I think that those know me would testify, I don't have a problem working with anybody. I gladly welcome any of you all in my office at any time. As the citizens who elected me, I'm an open, we have an open door. I welcome you. I welcome you all especially more during tax season when we are, you know, up against it, that we pull through. We do what we're supposed to do above and beyond. I can't work with you all if you all don't work with me. I have that open door. Feel free to come by. Mr. Tipton and I had a conversation on an individual account about a week and a half ago. Again, you're always welcome. I don't know, I mean, I feel like $185,000 is amazing. I don't know, your all's comments or concerns on that.
It would have been amazing in 2012. So why did you not do your job in 2012 when you were elected?
I realize that.
Why didn't you do your job? Why'd you wait five years?
You know, Mr. Mann, I have a lot of compassion and concern for the citizens. I don't want to see a tax rate increase by no means. Again, I'm tired of being the scapegoat.
You're not.
For not being able to balance a budget. Do you not think that we know what comes in, what we write the checks for, what we see coming and going?
Mrs., this is proof. You doing your job. We collected $185,000. You did. But you doing your job. Now, you said in 2012, we met with you in October. You'd start at January 13, and it didn't happen. So I voted to give you an extra employee, and I caught a lot of flack over that. I was on your side. It was a four to three vote. So you sound against it. It is not. If I had been against you, I would never have voted for that. I wanted you to do your job, and this was to help you. And you know that. It's not political, I promise you.
We could have been beyond that fee, and I'm thankful. Thank you very much.
You don't sound like me, because I voted to do that for you. And so if you'd come back and say we've got something personal, no. Or political, no.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Well, the proof is in the numbers.
Let's keep, let's, we can all talk without everybody.
Well, I'm the favorite one, and in fact, he's liable for everything I can to help her. So she comes in here and says that we got a personal endeavor, political, and I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to get a fish ready for you. I voted for you in 2012, or 2011. I supported you. I thought you were the right person for the job. Your public, I'm going to say that, and I voted for you, I supported you. But when you didn't do your job, I stood in your way. I tried everything I could to make this, make this right. You came and attacked me and Marshall because of this. We're doing everything we can to try to get the taxes collected in this county. If you go five years, $185,000 in four months, doing your job, you're collecting the taxes.
What about this name? Why have you all not come and talked to me about this?
There's so much negative about it.
Where's the sheriff?
It may be a subdued subject now, because this is working. I don't know if it would or not. The taxes are a problem, so we are trying everything we can to keep having to raise taxes. We're $323,000 now deficit. So if you can, if you can say you're doing your job right, and for five years you didn't, and then tell us why you didn't, you won't.
I am. I'm doing, I'm doing my job, but I was elected to do.
Now, now.
I'm doing my job.
Because Dr. Redline said that he personally would vote to remove that employee if you didn't. You said you would start in August, and you didn't. You started in February.
And look how well we've done.
And why did you start in August?
So what's the problem?
You said you would start in August, and you didn't.
$185,000.
I know, and you've done great. Thank you for that. But why did you wait until February of 2017, when you were elected, the 1st of January in 2012? So it's not personal. I promise you it's not personal. It says, "We've got a job here to do, and you can see what is done, but you doing your job." That's about twice your salary you collected in four months. So we are holding you accountable because you didn't do your job for five years.
That's your opinion.
Okay, okay. And I'm sorry for being like that, but I don't like the thing we're pointing here because we were doing what we had to do to make this county as well as we can, get those people to pay their taxes that are, that are supposed to pay them. That's all we were asking. And thank you, you have done great with this. It should have been done five years ago.
I think we should move forward and all of that. That's my opinion.
If you ain't doing your job, you're only back.
I'm with our county administrator, you know, I think we're all on the same page. I think that we're all being united as one and not working against each other.
I agree.
And Ms. you brought up about the individual that called. You got that resolved? You got that taken care of?
I think I told you that when I called you back, Mr. Tipton.
Right, Darrell had asked it earlier.
I got that called, too. I just wondered if you got it.
Yeah.
Resolved.
His complaint was, he was, wasn't handled properly when he has to speak to somebody.
As I told Mr. Tipton, there's two sides to this story.
Yeah, I called Mr. Tipton, and then I called Dave on it. But as long as it's resolved, that's all that matters.
And you're welcome to call me on it. Mr. Tipton did, and I appreciate it. We addressed the situation. As I told him, there's two sides to every story, so, you know.
That's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome. Is there anything else?
I will say this, Ms. related to your comment about individuals calling the other treasurers. I don't know if anybody else in this board has talked to another treasurer from another county or not, but I can tell you openly that this entire board, and especially Mr. Jeter, several times during the last year or two have mentioned our collection of delinquent real estate taxes as well as personal property. And we knew that you were doing the DMV stops, and we knew that John Rife is doing his part. And just to be honest, I felt like Mr. Jeter, you know, was bringing that up pretty often, and maybe we hadn't acted on it at all, just to gain any information. So I set a meeting up with Mr. Jeter, myself, Ms. Kegley, to discuss any and all possibilities of collecting any, any of those taxes, just to see if there's anything else out there that anybody else was doing. During the meeting, sitting at the table, I called those counties to get their history on balances, how, where their current balances are now, what, if they were using John Rife for another group, and other than John Rife and DMV stops, was there anything else they were doing? I did that to educate Mr. Jeter, myself, Ms. Kegley, on what's going on in all counties around. It had nothing to do with, with trying to see if there's something you're not doing or to undermine anything that has to do with this county. It was strictly an educational thing. And I felt like it did do diligence to Mr. Jeter's request, and we ought to follow up and see if there's anything out there. That was the entire reason that I called, and I will tell you that I did. Lee County and Russell is the only two places I called. Anybody else in here, I have no idea if anybody else has called, but that's where that came from.
Thank you all.
Is there anything else? Thank you.
Sure is a beautiful day.
Good morning. Sure is.
I appreciate what you fellows do. I mean, sometimes it is hard. We all got to work together, though, and these budgets and tougher sites and a lot of problems, but you can't solve overnight sometime. I appreciate the work you're doing. Now, the sheriff calls month of May, dispatcher receives 6,608 calls. Sheriff's officers respond to 828 of those. We had 36 domestic violence calls or protective orders served. We had 90 felony warrants served, 55 misdemeanors. This shows you a little bit about, I guess, for most of us who are younger, you see more alcohol drunk in public or drunk driving. But you look at the next line there, we had 58 drug arrests last month and one drunk driver. So you see the alcohol is not the drug of choice nowadays. We had 215 traffic sentences issued. That's a little bit more than normal. But to reason we got more traffic sentences, DMV gave a silver title in order to write traffic sentences, and most of them were sick belts, child restraint, speeding. So they wrote more tickets because DMV was paying for it. We had three written warnings. I think I gave all three of those. Had 27 motor vehicle accidents. We served 389 civil papers. We had 84 investigations, with 42 of them closed with arrest. I do know one of the, one of the cases of the state's working on right now at VDOC, if you know anybody, got some steel chainsaws for sale. They broke into VDOC at Fort Blackmore a while back. And they had a camp, 18 bus parked in there, the blue bus, to take the inmates out. And they cut, had bolt cutters when they come in, cut the chains off of the bus, and stole like five steel weed eaters and five steel chainsaws and a few more things. So if you see anything in the area, we did get a picture of the person that broke in, but it's a little bit grainy, but we'll be able to identify them one of these days. If you see anybody's got chainsaw or weed eater still for sale, a lot of them, let us know. We had 364 man hours program security, nine L-State extraditions, three in-state transports, and we started locking down each month these concealed implements. We had 40 gun fights happened in our last month. We had 10 traffic checkpoints, 37 vehicles unlocked, traveled 42,127 miles. Some of my colleagues are busy, but we've just got to keep working at it. If I got any questions or comments.
Good job, dog. Appreciate you doing it.
I appreciate all y'all. Thanks.
I had a comment yesterday on unlocking cars, and this is their comment, now it's not mine. They said, they flagged me down going down the road. And they said, "Why didn't you charge to unlock the cars?" He said he was tired of his tax money paying to unlock cars. That's their comment, not mine.
If he didn't, he's not having one done a lot. What you got in people, how many comments, why do you unlock it? Why do you have to unlock one down in Union? Why do you unlock one at Hiltons? My men need to be patrolled in the whole area. So if you got to go to Hiltons and unlock one, or if you got to go to Duffield and unlock one, he needs to patrol that area anyway. It takes about, average, three or four minutes to unlock one. So I think that's a service to the citizens of the county. It's free. I've had mine locked before. It cost me $60 to get in it. So I feel like that's a service to the people here. It's about three minutes on the average, and we need to be in every area of the county anyway. So you can tell him that, or I'll tell him if you want.
Okay.
Tell him, call me.
Like I said, it's not my phone. It's just one I've gotten here.
We do a lot of things we're not supposed to do. We do it because it will help the citizens of the county. I understand you know what my situation is.
Yes.
Got to do what's best for the county sometimes, and I can take criticism any time. Sometimes if it's constructive, it helps me to do a better job. Anybody got any comments, complaints, I'd be glad to listen to them any time, tell them why we do what and why we're doing it. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your job, all of you's doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Would like to make one more comment.
All right.
I said to the man here from VDOC, appreciate him, you're on a six-year plan. I know it's coming up a bit later, but what I'd like to say, I feel like we could get more roads paved, finished, heritage, more heritage highways. It's all less restrictions and a lot cheaper. And I feel like we need, when you got a list of six-year plan, you know, that's got different guidelines than the heritage highways. It's a whole lot cheaper for the heritage roads. I've been here 10 years, and I didn't even got my road on the list yet. Ain't even got it on the six-year plan, been asking 10 years. What I think, we need two lists, because it's two different guidelines, two different prices. We need one six-year plan, we need one that's the heritage highways, because the criteria is not the same for both of them. My road don't even fit in on the six-year plan, because it don't have the traffic. Politically falls into category of the, of the heritage road. It's a whole lot cheaper and get a whole lot more done. I'd like to see y'all look at, see what y'all think about fixing two different lists instead of just a six-year plan.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I appreciate the point for you. Where y'all started about the drug use here in Scott County. I know, sorry, I recall, said they put $14 million in the budget to take care of this drug, people overdosing, dying. I forget how many people, they said, these teenagers are dying today, young people. It was a, can't remember how many it was. But I wonder what Scott County's got going on about the drug use and stuff like that.
We're fighting as hard as we can, and once you look at it, every one of us makes your choices every day. If they want to overdose, I'm not going to stop your kid, my kid, from overdose most likely. But you got to fight the distributors, and it's like we've got, statewide, you average a drug agent making 50 arrests a year. My average, 300 a year. They're doing all it can do, wish we had more, wish we could do more. If anybody got any problems, anybody knows anybody drug dealing, anybody don't, you can't keep somebody from taking a pill, but you can stop the drug dealer if you got some help in the county. Anybody got any help, any suggestions, all this and anything you got to say. How can we do a better job?
Well, I know that Governor over in New Jersey, Chris Christie, you know, he said if we get somebody on drugs, he said we don't take them down there and throw them in jail and let them sweat it out and suffer down there. He said we can send them to six months rehab. They got to stay six months and try to take care of the people, rather than just, you know, people smoking cigarettes, and you lock him up, he's locked up, you know.
I understand.
It's really hard on them.
Here's a situation on that. I try to deal with everyone I can. You got somebody on drugs, I try to talk to them. Get into rehab, get you life straightened out, do what's right. I don't have a problem.
But we have a rehab account.
Only thing you got a problem.
Is there, what is the rehab account?
You got mental health, right across River Bridge, Weber City, they deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
What you've got is the people, when you catch them, they're on drugs, they don't realize you got a problem, and they don't want any help until you put them in jail. You say, the judge said you got a year in jail, five years in jail, oh, I need a rehab. I've asked them, I've offered help, but they won't take it until they.
I don't care if rehab, when you, when they done it on their own, you got to at least have them locked up and still have rehab for those people.
Some of them, we've worked with this. I went to meetings in eastern part of the state. They got some rehabs in the jails, and I've tried to do that. But us, the county sheriff, done the same thing, tried to get rehab in the jails. And I don't know what the situation is at that, but we tried anyway.
We'll keep trying. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Bill Vegas, I'm the Assistant County Administrator and Director of Public Works, and it's my honor this morning and sad duty to announce the retirement of one of our employees, Dicky Joe Castle. Now, that's Mr. Castle to come up. Dicky's worked for the county for 31 years. Last 10 or so, he's been truck driver for the county with a flawless record, save one automatic camera at the red light in Kingsport.
Not bad either.
Not bad. But I'd like to present this to Mr. Castle in appreciation of 31 years of service to the citizens of Scott County as an employee of the Scott County Department of Public Works from 1986 to 2017. We appreciate you and wish you the best in a long retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Castle. That's fantastic, and we appreciate 31 years. That's a long time to dedicate to the people of Scott County. All right, we're in citizens' expressions. Is there anyone else who's here for an item that's not further down the list? Hearing none, we'll close citizens' expression period. Thank you. I will reiterate one more thing about the drug education. I think Mr. Sheriff Buckett touched on it. They do have drug education and counseling in the Duffield Regional Jail. If somebody gets caught, not only are they, if they're incarcerated, not only are they kept down there, but they are enrolled in drug education. The other thing is, we have a program in the budget for next year that involves the inmate work release program. And I will say that Mr. McClung was adamant that if we do that program, we include drug counseling or drug education in the program for those people. In fact, he would not approve the program unless we did put it in there. And of course, we told him that that's his program to design, but those folks, whether they're incarcerated or not, if they're charged, they are going to have access to drug counseling and drug education. So that part is coming after the July 1, beginning of the new budget, so.
I, that's why I came here today. Can I just come forward?
You, you can, ma'am. We closed citizens' expression, but we'll.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 we'll, we'll make a, we'll take a moment.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I'm new to the community, and I'm not very good at public speaking.
That's fine.
I really am not. I'm very nervous.
That's all right.
And I also have a.
No one's been nervous here.
So please excuse me if I did loss. I, I bought Miss Angelie Wells' house on Bishoptown in Duffield. I don't know if any of you knew her or not.
Excuse me, could you give us your name?
My first name is Carol Lee.
All right.
And my last name is Boz.
B.O.
E.S.
B.O.E.
And Carol Lee is C.A.R.O.L.E.E.
That's for the reference. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. But I bought Miss Angelie's Wells' house. Before I moved here, I was a foster and adoptive mom, and I started many programs years ago, plus twenty-five, third years ago, before they were ever thought of. I worked on laws for children on a state level numerous times. I even wrote and drafted something for federal judiciary, accepted. I wrote myself. I'm just a mom, that's all I'm, you know? I'm just very blessed at problem solving and research. And I'd like to offer, I've looked into the jail thing because of a personal attachment to it. When I was a foster mom, I never thought any of the biological parents were beneath me. You know, there's a reason people are like that, and sometimes, especially with first offenders, we need to look at more stuff. I do know the person that I got personally involved with regarding the jail and the situation was ordered to go to Scott County Behavioral Health on pre-trial. And when he went, he was told, "We don't deal with people like you." And I couldn't believe it. Neither could. From my understanding, I don't, I've never talked to Ms. Klein, but they went to Kim Klein, and she didn't believe him, and she called and was told the same thing. I have family in DC that works with CMS, and this issue is being addressed because that's wrong. Nobody should ever be taken away from mental health. And that really needs to make sure that is in place, and if there's anything I can do to ensure that we have an extremely strong program for people that are addicted to drugs. Because people commit crimes, yes, they do. I read one of the articles that Mr. McClung spoke in, and I don't remember his address, his exact word, but he was talking about criminals, saying they all had substance abuse problems. Yeah, but normally that stems from either mental health issues or some horrific trauma or something. And I know that personally because I had gone through it as a child too, and I was just blessed, and I went the other way to care too much. But there's so many more things you can do. There's so many programs that have free startups. They just had a big seminar in Abington, people from Washington DC that came down, May twenty-fifth. And it was how to start up these diversion programs and work release and all these other things, and home monitoring, and ways to start without any funding, you know? And if I can do any research or use any of my contacts that I've contacted, the ADA Center on Children's Law, which is children's law, but they can still put me in touch with people up there, and then my family that works up there, you know, for the substance abuse. I mean, when I was a foster mom, I didn't operate the same. One of my kids I had for two years, her dad was in prison, her mother was a prostitute, and they knew I cared about them, biological families too. She came to my house at four in the morning, beat up by her John, and didn't know what to do. But because I didn't judge her, and I brought her in, gave her a shower, gave her a couple outfits, that's all it took. She turned her life around, ended up buying a house and getting her kids back, and she's got a amazing life today, and her kids have a great chance. I mean, I just, we really need to look into all avenues before we just throw people in jail, especially for their first offenses, okay? And yes, there's mandatory minimums, and I'm very well aware of that, but I'm also very well aware of the safety valves and all kinds of other things. And what we decide to charge them with, you know, when it comes to the money, it's costing our county, you know? I mean, do we want to put these people in prison? If you look at the statistics and all the psychiatric and psychological research on these matters, okay? If you put somebody, a first offender, especially somebody that's using drugs, because they have underlying mental health or trauma issues, it makes them worse, not better. And that's not what we wanna do to our community. We, you know, if we have first offenders, we look at every case individually, not just they're trash on the side of the road. People are fixable, and I live to this community because it's a Christian community. I love America, and if we're gonna love by Christ, I know darn sure, you know? He sat there with the woman well. He didn't push her, he didn't walk away. You know? Sometimes truly caring about people is all it takes, is one person, you know? I think there's a lot of other ways to look at it, and I'm willing to do, I can do up to like twenty hours of research and contact, and I mean, I will put in everything I'll give it to that I can, free services and funding. I mean, I have absolutely no problem to do that, whether it be starting up the program or the substance abuse treatment. I'm willing to volunteer my time. I'm a private caregiver for my aunt. You guys might know my uncle, the old living factory or whatever it was that, over on the old Central Park Road that's all blocked off by the police. My uncle is Ned Fattisby. He works somehow with government, inspects it like once a month with Larry. He's been in your community for twenty-seven years, he lives in Kingsport. But I care for his wife, my aunt. She doesn't know who I am, she has dementia, and I have hours free, where I'm just saying I'm not gonna do all of this, and I don't mind, 'cause it's my community. It's where my daughter's gonna be raised, my last one home. By the way, I have ten. I adopted seven, and then God blessed me with twins, and a forty, a thirteen-year-old I have now, so I want this community to be strong and truly caring. That's what it is, and that's why I moved here. And maybe we can look at a lot of different avenues, because we don't need to put him in prison and teach him how it'd be worse to come back home. We want to show him care.
We appreciate your comments, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen, citizens' expression has been closed, and there's no action of my knowledge to be taken based on citizens' expression.
Let me make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Blood pressure back above four hundred. You know, and folks, don't take this wrong. Darrell will tell you, and one of us board, we taught everything we could to help Nancy. And she, we met with her in October two thousand twelve, Darrell and I did, and she said she's gonna start the DMV stops in January the thirteenth. And so I voted last year that extra employee for her. I don't regret doing that, I think it's the right thing to do. And she promised us that it'd take six weeks to train her, she hired her July first, and by August fifteenth, she'd put them in place. And it's February. You see what it's done by doing these. So we fought this budget for forever, so a hundred eighty-five thousand in four months. And so she says, "Don't look back in the past." Well, sometimes you look at performance to see if they're doing what they should do. And so that was my, my comments about that. I may have got that out of the way, but I was offended by it. I'm not, it's not personal. And I said what I said, I said, "I've never said..." I voted for her in two thousand eleven. I thought she was the right person for the job. I voted to give her that extra employee, which I got talked to pretty hard by some people. But that was the right thing to do. It's not personal, it's not politics. So anyway, I'm glad that we're doing this, and I commend her for doing it. But my argument is, this hundred eighty-five thousand we collected in four months, and John Rice said that because of the five-year lending rollover, losing a hundred twenty-five thousand a year, and she can't collect because it's five years. And so we've done, we've lost money because of it. I am glad, after five, almost five and a half years, that she's doing her job. And we tried to get her in two thousand twelve to do this. Now, it's been said in the, in the previous treasurer, was so upset with the thing that said, "He did do DMV stops." And he was gonna be, I was hoping he'd be here to clarify that. He did do DMV stops before he left in two thousand, December two thousand eleven. So anyway, it is not personal. It is me doing, and I thought this board is doing, what they need to do to operate this county as efficient as we can operate. Now, if anybody in department head is not gonna do their job, I'm gonna be the one, I'll call their attention to it. And so we worked, and Darrell will tell you, we met with her, done everything we could to try to help her do this job. Why did she wait? And I wish she was still here. I mean, I really do, and she'll maybe see it on TV or read it in the paper. But I would like to know why she waited five and a half years to do her job. That's all I ask, and she says, "Don't look backward, look forward." But still, past performance is important on anybody that's got a job to do. And so when you look at this county, a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in four months, that shows you how important it is that each of us, if you're a department head or whatever your position is, to do your job and bring this kind of money in, you see how important it is. As far as the county deca, we talked about it, we're looking at every avenue we can to try to get people to do the right thing and to pay their taxes, because it's not fair to raise taxes on people that's willing to pay to cover those that's not willing to pay. We have avenues to go. You can tax offsets, you can, you can capture their income tax returns, you can capture their bank accounts, you can even take a vehicle and put a boot on a wheel. They can't drive their vehicle and pay their taxes. You can do that. That's not the route, the route I want to go, but I hope she don't take this personal. 'Cause any of us here were to be held accountable in these jobs, and I think that we, that it's our job to see to it if we got a way to, we're not trying to make somebody pay what they don't owe. Just pay what that you owe, that you, that you're enjoying, the benefits of everything in this county. And so to collect this much money in four months, I hope everybody sees where I come from, and it's, we tried to do this for five years, and it didn't happen. How much money did we lose? So anyway, I hope, I wish she'd stayed. I do apologize, you know, my blood pressure went up pretty high. When you pull up, say it's political, it is not. It most certainly is not. Or it's not personally, but she's actually, her mother, my first cousin, she's part of my family. I'm not attacking her. If it was my own mother in there, I would say the same thing, "You're not doing your job." And now she is, and I'm glad for her, I'm glad for this county. Anyway, just clear that up. I probably, you know, said more I should, but anyway, it's just something that needs to be said, and if the proof's in the pudding, as they'll say, and goes, a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars worth. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Man. We move to item seven, which is an advertised public hearing on the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget. Before we start the public hearing, I will say that the staff and the board has done what I think is an incredible job and done their very best to commit money to the things that are necessary and not overspend or spend in excess on things that we could get by without. They shaved the initial prediction of our budget from being a million and two, a million two hundred thousand to a million three hundred thousand in the red from the beginning, now to just a little bit over three hundred thousand. So we found almost a million dollars, or the budget committee, as well as the staff and the board did, in money that we could cut down to prevent the county being in a larger deficit and having to consider other avenues to fund it. The, the only other thing I'll say is that the tax rates that you dealt with last fiscal year will remain the same. There's no tax increases on real estate, personal property, or merchants, capital, and tools. Those are listed, and the entire budget has been advertised and listed for you to study, and we've done our very best. Before we open the public hearing, I'll give staff or the board a chance to make any comment they want before we open the public hearing, or we can do it afterwards, either one.
I did want to say, though, you know, the people that come for the budget committee, I mean, our departments are struggling, and we leveled funding them, but anyway, I commend them, staff, for what they've done, and me and Darrell served on this thing, and with the help of them and the numbers we had, and so it was, it wasn't as much what we did, just what the folks did here that runs the county that was willing to make the sacrifices they did to keep our budget as close as we could to balance it. They had to go a little bit into a general fund, three hundred, three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars worth to make it, make it dollar for dollar, make it, make it right. But anyway, I do commend the staff here and department heads in the county for doing what they're doing. I really do.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Anyone else? All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing on the budget. Anyone who wishes to speak?
Good morning. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Michael. I'm currently the executive director of Mountain Herald or Citizens. Our offices are located in Big Stone Gap. And first, I would just like to say, we appreciate the support from the Scott County Board of Supervisors throughout the years. But I'm here to express some concerns about the proposed forty-two percent cut to what Mountain Herald or Citizens receives from Scott County, and then go through some of our over thirty programs and services that we offer to the citizens within, within the planning district. So I'm just gonna highlight a few. These numbers are specific to Scott County, and just to give you an idea of the impact that we're concerned about. With our emergency services, this is a program that provides heating assistance for older persons in the wintertime. We provided two hundred and thirty-three individuals assistance, and that represents twenty-one percent of our entire planning district. So those two hundred and thirty-three in Scott County are twenty-one percent of the total we serve. Our home delivered meals program, we provided twenty-five thousand five hundred and four meals to residents of Scott County, and that represents a thirty percent, that's thirty percent of all the meals that we provide within the planning district. Convergent meals, we provided twelve hundred and ninety-three. Our public transportation department has provided eleven, eleven thousand four hundred eighty-three one-way trips. Home acre services has provided four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine hours, representing twenty-four percent in the planning district. Again, these are just Scott County numbers. Our personal care services department has provided sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight hours of services in Scott County. Our respite service, a respite program, provides a break for those caregivers who are caring for a loved one, and that has provided two thousand and ninety-seven hours of service, or twenty-seven percent of all those served by Mountain Herald or Citizens. We also have children's services in the Southwest Virginia Child Advocacy Center, along with our Healthy Families Program, and that program has provided assistance, the CAC, the Child Advocacy Center, has provided assistance for ninety-four physically or sexually abused children, and they're not offending parents, in addition to thirty-nine children and their mothers through the Healthy Families Program. We also have some of the largest waiting lists in the state of Virginia, here within our planning district. We have well over two hundred individuals, for example, that are on our home delivered meals waiting list, and around seventeen percent of those are in Scott County. So we're constantly struggling to find funding, and I realize that you all are having to do the same as we face uncertainty with state and federal funding, but we ask that you consider level funding for Mountain Herald or Citizens, because a forty-two percent impact would have an impact on our ability to serve the citizens of Scott County, older persons, abused children. So I thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Comments, questions? Mr. Womper. All right, thank you.
Again, thank you, and we appreciate your support as well.
Anyone else? We're in public hearing for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget.
I just think, ma'am...
Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton. You want to come up, please?
I can walk through.
Okay.
I want to know how many grants that's been took, understand, or how many of y'all took advantage of this year?
Grants?
Grants, any or any at all?
There would be a multitude of those on any number of areas. Sheriff's Department, emergency services...
Commonwealth Attorney.
Commonwealth Attorney's Office...
Litter Control.
Litter Control. Every, I mean, many, many, many departments have requested and gone after and received grants to help fund the county services. grants to help fund the county services. A lot of those, I can't tell you how many, a lot of those required matching funds in the county, uh...
Well, matching?
Well, no, the county puts up matching funds. Typically, what we would do in a situation like that is we commit matching funds contingent upon receiving the grant. In other words, if it requires $5,000 from us to, to try to go and receive 5,000, then we would commit 5,000 to it contingent that they accept it, that, that they get the grant. In other words, we're spending five to get 10, and if we don't get to 10, we don't, we don't have to spend the five. But we've done that several times, and it's just a way to stretch our dollars, uh, and, um, try to help, uh, aid our budget with grant money. But to answer your question, many, and I'm missing a lot of them, but many, many departments have solicited grants and have received them.
Well, I seen several in paper, in our paper that we was offering. I never did see where anyone ever took any advantage of some of them.
Mr. Chairman, uh, in our budget, we have $3,651,701 allocated for revenue from grants.
Total.
Total.
All right. Just, just to repeat that so everyone can hear it, in the budget listed, there's over $3 million in grant money budgeted, based on what we received this past year, total.
Well, I seen enough where the students had some grants that they would, uh, would be able to get if they signed up for them. But I don't know if they took advantage of them or not, and I don't know where the board give them enough today, could take advantage of it or not. We're going to have to start taking advantage of our, not just for the things that suit some people. We're going to have to start taking advantage of the things that will help our county grow. And if we don't, all of our kids is going to be moved out of here in a few years, and there's not, we won't be needing anything because we're not this generation, we, God ain't going to have nothing to stay here for. So we're going to have to start moving things, or either we're going to have to start moving people. We're going to have to do something to get this thing to go. And I appreciate you for letting me talk.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Appreciate your comments. I will say that each meeting, almost every meeting that we have here, Ms. Vickers goes through appropriations and transfers, and she lists what those transfers are, appropriations, and each, almost every meeting, she goes through some grant money that we receive that comes into a certain, um, that comes into general fund that has to be transferred to the appropriate line item. And it's meeting after meeting after meeting that grant money is transferred. All right, anyone else? We're in the budget. Hearing none. We will close the public hearing on the budget for 2017-2018.
I do have one item that we need to address.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, at the May 3rd budget meeting, we discussed the elimination of the Deputy Emergency Coordinator position and leaving $1,000 in case of county emergency to be used as overtime money, and we need to do a formal vote on that. It was a consensus of the board, as stated in the May 3rd minutes, but we do need a vote.
All right. So, the motion would be... All right. The, uh, the motion would involve approving the elimination of the Deputy Emergency Coordinator's position and leaving $1,000 in that line item of county emergency, which, um, Jeff Bricky oversees the emergency services. So discussion or questions on that?
I'll make a motion and make that adjustment.
Mr. Mann makes a motion that we, um, make that change as listed, who I'm saying? Sir. Mr. Heron seconds. All in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye. Opposed? All right. That is done. Gentlemen, I'll mention one thing, um, just, just for your education, or just to go over it one more time, just so you'll be clear. Under Mountain Empire Older Citizens, there was actually two line items. One is our county contribution to Mountain Empire Older Citizens. Their request was 50,000. In the budget this year is 30,000. And the other line item is the contribution to child advocacy. Their request was 10,000, and our contribution that will be, that's in the budget currently is 5, 5,000. So that's what, uh, and the, the 50 and 10 were last year's, uh, levels, and 30 and 5 is what's in the budget for this year.
So last year, we gave 15?
50 and 10.
60 total.
If I remember correctly, the reason we cut that, wasn't it, was because the adjoining counties wouldn't give them here as much as we were?
I checked with, uh, neighboring counties with their administrators or their budget personnel, and they've also been decreasing their funding as well. Is that what you're seeing as well, Mr. Womper?
That's happened in Norton. Wise County is remaining the same, it's gone up just a little bit. They're around 80,000. I'd have to get those exact numbers for you. And Lee County, uh, since they sponsored their emergency fuel fund now, has gone up a little bit. But we have seen decreases, uh, with the city of Norton.
Yeah. So I had checked with the neighboring counties to see what they were funding in comparison to what we were funding. And I can get you that information and send that out to you for reconsideration, because the budget is scheduled to be adopted on June 21st, so you have a little time to, if you want to make a reconsideration.
Mr. Womper, do you have a breakdown on how many citizens are served by each?
Locality?
Yeah, come on up.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a, uh, a listing of how many citizens you're serving from each county?
Yes, we could provide any information that you all would like, as to, I don't have that with me at the moment or right offhand. I just...
It'll be good.
Is the information you sent me with your budget request Scott County only? If it is, I can share that with the board?
It is. Yes. And those percentages that I, that I was, as I had gone through a few things, were representing, you know, that percentage of the total population that we serve.
Okay.
I can send that to you.
Okay. Thank you. It'll be helpful. Appreciate it.
If we, um, you know, we don't want to indicate that we're definitely going to make any changes or do anything, but we are certainly willing to gain all the information we can and consider it. If you want to get that to, uh, Ms. Thorns, they'll distribute it to us, and we can consider it, uh, making a change before the budget is adopted.
You said a good sign, a bad sign.
That's usually when we cut the break. I've been at this a long time. That's the first time. We will consider everything that you present, and, you know, if there's a change or a possibility with change, we can make it before we adopt a budget. That's all we can promise you, that we'll go through and consider.
Well, I appreciate that very much, and we certainly do thank you for your consideration. Okay, it's just a bit of a 42% cut was, uh, was a bit of a shock, so thank you all for your consideration. Any information you need, just ask Frieda or ask me directly, and I'd be happy to provide it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.